I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Sharon, do we have a quorum?
Sorry?
Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. We have one. Great. Okay. The very first thing that I would like to do today is do a few introductions. And the first introduction that I would like to do is I'd like to introduce Elaine. Elena. Elena Hernandez. And Elena Hernandez is in Dennis's office. One of the attorneys in Dennis's office. Dennis is on vacation. Now, he's coming home today, though.
How dare you.
To the supervisors' meeting.
How dare you.
I know. That's what I said. But Elena has very graciously agreed to be here with us today. And we're glad to meet you. And we may meet you some more later.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next order of business on the introductions and announcements is I would like to have Sharon and Joe, if you all would come up here.
Come up where?
Well, how do you come up over here? Because we want to get some.
To the podium.
Oh, yes. You don't have to speak. We won't make you speak.
I'm always ready to speak.
Well, I know that. That's what I'm telling you. Don't have to speak now. Just teasing. First of all, we want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for being a part of this board. Both Sharon and Joe are going to be leaving the board as of today. This is their last board meeting. And we're very, very sorry to see you all go. Sharon has only been here with us one year because she is leaving with King William. But we have two things that we would like to present to you. And this is kind of to remember us. We want to say thank you for all the work you've done. You stepped right in and picked up secretary. I mean, first meeting, you were here then. And we have a certificate that we would like to hand to you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And I can give you a hug across the table, so I'll give it a handshake.
That's very sweet.
So, thank you so much. And Joe, I don't know how many years. You've been here a long time. Joe actually served an eight-year term.
Correct.
Back a while back. Joe and I were on the -- he was on the board when I first came on. And then Joe took a year off. Year off, two years?
Year off.
Year off. That's what I thought it was. And agreed to come back. So it has been with us for four years now. And but has decided that it's that he wants to retire from the board. And so, Joe, we have a few little things for you, too.
Okay.
I want to make sure I'm getting the right ones. So, kind of a little remembrance. And then we would like to present this to you.
Great. Thank you.
And.
In a hearty handshake. A warm, hearty handshake.
And a hug later. When I'm going across the table.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I have a request.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the meeting, I would like a group photo.
Okay. Okay.
With everyone who's here. Including our five constituents.
Great. That sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay. And Sharita, we'd like to ask you to come up, please. And Sharita has been on the staff for many, many, many years. Thirty?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. I was close to thirty. I knew it was getting close. And Sharita, of course, has will have all kinds of recommendations. I know from the staff, but we want to.
I asked that thing I do.
Oh, you did. Well, you didn't ask us. Anyway, we wanted to say to you that we appreciate everything you've done, especially this last year. We asked you to step into the role with you and Jamie doing the active director and acting assistant director. And it has meant so much to us. We've appreciated everything that you have done. And we have a little memento for you, too, from the board, to say thank you so much for all that you have done. And again, I can't get across there to give you a hug, but thank you so much for everyone.
Thank you.
The next on our agenda is to consider any agenda amendments. Does anyone have any amendments to our agenda? Okay. If not, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Barbara, anyone? I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Jody? Any other discussion about it? In that case, I call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the agenda as is? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the citizens' time. And I just remind you all, if there's anyone who would like to speak, and I don't know if there's anyone here who was planning on speaking today. Okay. Doesn't look like we have any takers today. Okay. Well, we're glad that you all are here. Very glad that you're here. So we will move on then to the consideration of a consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have two sets of minutes. We have the May 28th Board of Trustees meeting. And we have the June 18th Board of Trustees Special Meeting. And we have, okay, this is on the, okay, on the June, is that on the June 18th? Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. On the June 18th minutes, we do have a small adjustment that we need to make on that. And that is on the adjournment of that. It says that it's at Montpelier Branch Library. And it was actually at the, shoot.
Here today. Yeah, Goochlin.
Okay. Oh, yes. Okay. Yes. Okay. I was thinking it was listing where the meeting was. Okay. So we just needed to change the location to today. Okay? The other items that are on that agenda are the board financial report, the warrants report, the monthly deposit record report, and the fund schedule, May fund schedule. Are there any, is there anything that we need to pull off of the consent agenda? Good. All right. In that case, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I do.
Okay. And that's with the correction.
Right.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second from Joe. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, one question.
Yes.
The Aww acquisition. How many learning, early learning centers is that by?
That was seven.
Seven.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. And that question came from the warrants, right?
From the warrants. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, comments about the consent agenda? In that case, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So the consent agenda has been accepted. All right. Next item on our agenda is our directors' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're with the board. Good morning.
Good morning.
Some key statistics from May. We had over 400 new library cards issued in May, over 62,000 items circulated, and over 37,000 library visits to our branches last month. Some updates on some projects and operational details. Our new outreach van is fully equipped. It's on the road. It's airing service this month, which is great timing. Because of, as of June 30th, we will begin a daily delivery route to all seven branches. You may or may not know, but previously, all of our big branches, Ashland, Atlee, Mechanicsville, and Hanover got daily deliveries, but Montpelier, Goochlin, Rockville received delivery every other day. So our hope with this is delivering to all seven branches every day is going to speed up our process of getting books and materials to our customers, which is great news. E-rate program changes. We are still awaiting new contracts with T-Mobile. While we're waiting for that information, we should see no change to our hotspot program. We're still going to make hotspots available to our customers in our service area while we're just working out the details of these changes. Update on digital access. It seems like we're holding pretty steady with the Richmond Times-Dispatch digital usage. We had 425 searches and 238 logins in May. In terms of public communication, the King William County withdrawal, the MOU was finalized beginning of this month. So we went very quickly to notifying the public via email about the changes and provided signage in the branches to let our customers know. The final day of service for up at King William and West Point was this past Saturday on June 21st. And this week, our staff have been focusing on getting the PRL property out of those buildings and then just finalizing this transition. Another communication that went out this month, you may have seen it, you may have received the email. We are starting overdue item notifications in July. So patrons will now receive re-automated email notifications when they have an item overdue. Currently, you're just receiving that notice that you need to renew the item. This will give folks some reminders that their materials are overdue and need to come back to the library. We had a lot of feedback from customers that they were wanting this type of notification to help them manage their accounts, so we're happy to provide that to our customers. Summer reading program is going gangbusters. It's great. We've had, as of yesterday, over 5,300 SRP registrations to date, which is excellent. Everybody's off to a great start, and it looks like we will meet and exceed last year's numbers. We were putting really high attendance at the kickoff meetings. You might have seen some of the photos in the directors' report. They were fantastic. The Brad tags that I talked about, I think at the Montpelier branch in their last full meeting, are excellent. We've had to repurchase. We've run out. We've repurchased those. The kids love them. It's keeping them coming back each week for that next one, which is, is great. We've had our first series of system-wide performances with the Virginia Living Museum. They've brought a variety of reptiles, sometimes snakes, into the building. We've had some great numbers for that and some really great outreach and school visits from our program and staff as well. The resource highlight this week, I feel like I have talked about this in previous months, but Novelist, one of my favorite readers advisory tools, if you've not checked it out, has a fresh look. They went live with some new content available for people. Their TOWDYS design is being very easy to use for everyone, so it's really not just for, you know, a deep dive librarian readers advisory tool, but made it very friendly for first-time casual users. They have added new content called Books with Buzz about titles that people heard about in the media. They've created more curated lists for folks. And if you've never used Novelist, it's just a wide variety of ways you can kind of take content from a book that you've read before that you particularly liked. If you liked a female heroine or just different pieces, you can kind of select those, and they will come and give you a list of curated titles based on your interest. It is, in my opinion, one of the most underrated databases that we provide. We do get funding from the Library of Virginia to offer this now, but I will say that Plumaki Regional Library does support Novelist Select, which is, when you go into the catalog and you see the Novelist content, when you look at a particular title, it's embedded right into our catalog. That is an extra service that we have bought to just help people. It provides reviews for titles and reader likes and other, you know, important information for folks to use. So check that out the next time you're on the website. That is under, on our website, under databases page. You'll see it under books and literature there. Again, I have trouble picking out programs and things to talk about, but Atlee, Ashland had Free Comic Book Day, dancing tea party, line dancing, which has been very popular there. Outreach at summer camps. Atlee hosted SRP 9 and had great numbers. And they built an airheart escape room, and they had over, they have over 1,000 sign-ups there. Goochlin had over 173 attendees at their summer reading program kickoff. Strong feedback about the updates to the children's area. Might be a good time to mention, if you have not been to Goochlin since they have updated, they've refreshed the carpets, the flooring, and the bathrooms. In the children's area, there was like a step-down story wall. They filled that in, so it just makes a lot more room and spacious in there. Smellless, the new acrylics are out and about in the branch. It just looks nice and refreshed, thanks to Goochlin County for providing those updates here. Mechanicsville just, branch just had their 25th bookmark contest that the Friends of Mechanicsville are going to put on. It's a fantastic program. They have the kids decorate the, a bookmark, and they pick winners. And this become the special bookmarks that are available in the branch throughout the summer. And then they have this wonderful reception, and the kids get to talk about their bookmarks. It's great. They also had a Bluey party and 150 folks for their summer reading kickoff. Montpelier's getting strong feedback on the new acrylic displays. They just launched a juvenile mystery book club that has been successful. Rockville had some tea parties and craft programs and has already almost surpassed their SRP numbers for the last year. Hanover hosted a local student artwork showcase. They've had strong attendance at their summer reading programs as well. Facilities and infrastructure. HVAC is giving us a run for our money. This past month, we've had some issues with Hanover, Mechanicsville, and Rockville branches. Atlee's having some trouble today. And late yesterday was there HVAC. Hanover County Facilities is working on that with us. Last Thursday, we had to close. I don't know if you remember this, when we had this really strong storm blow through. We lost power at Mechanicsville, Goochlin, and up at King William Branches late, around five, five minutes, and so we had to close those branches early. Power has since been restored. Montpelier had some HVAC issues on Monday, where building temperatures were getting high. We needed to close that location as well. Goochlin experienced a little temporary water shut-off while they replaced the water meter and has had some termite treatment that they discovered when they were doing some of the updates to the building. Hanover Branch, the back ramp is currently closed and awaiting repair. Hanover County Facilities had identified that we needed some work done to the ramp, and contractors came out to do that work and start the power wash, and they realized that it was in, you know, far worse, you know, disrepair than they had expected. So it really needs a complete overhaul. That is in the process with General Services. It's a little complicated because of the historic nature of the building, needing to get summer approval from the Architectural Board. So we are working with them to, you know, see where we are with that. In the meantime, so the ramp is closed. We've routed folks to our Atlee, Ashland branches. We've offered herb side services and signage to let people know we have been laying the materials out to their cars while we're waiting for us to be resolved. Personnel changes in May. I don't know if you've noticed, the last few months, we've had several promotions. And so now, we've got five new associates hired at Ashland, Rockville, and Montpelier Branches, one separation at Rockville. We do, I do have a June hire that I just couldn't wait till June to tell you about. So Ace Phillips has accepted our Business Operations Manager position. He is currently our branch manager at the King William Branch. So he will be running to operate administration in that role starting July 1st. Maybe a little sooner we can get him up there, but we're very excited for him to come up. And he will be in training in the next few months as he kind of learns his new role, but that is wonderful. Wonderful addition to our administration. And we're just, we're continuing to hire and fill positions as they become available in the branches. We've had some hardware updates in terms of strategy and technology, technology and collection strategy, some hardware updates, and IT maintenance is always ongoing, server updates. We have been working with our ILS, our integrated library system, to work through these changes with the King William residents, library cars, and the overdue rooms that I talked about. And we've been meeting regularly and going through that process with King William, so you know, quite, quite busy. But we are, I think, in a, in a good place. We've moved out most of the equipment. We're moving forward and looking forward to the rest of the summer.
I just want to add that Jamie and her staff have done a wonderful job on this transition. That's been a tough one. We were so late on getting the MOU, and so they were trying to do a lot of the work ahead of time that they could so that we weren't scrambling at the end. So I have to tell you, we really appreciate all the work that you all have done on that.
Yeah, it's been a lot in a very short period of time.
Short period of time. Yes. Any other questions, comments?
This is a great report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item on the business is legal counsel updates. And Elaine?
Good morning, again. I'm standing in for Dennis, as you all know, he's on vacation. We don't have a whole lot to update the board on with regards to legal updates. However, I do want to let the board know that we are working hard to fill the vacancy that was left by Ellen. We do not have anyone that is permanently assigned to the board, although I enjoy being here with you all today. So once we have that position filled, then the decision will be made as to who the primary legal representation to the Board of Trustees will be.
Great. Okay. Any questions for Elena? Great. Appreciate having you here today.
Thank you so much.
And we'll tell Dennis, though.
Thank you.
Such a slacker to go on vacation. All right. Next on our agenda are the standing committee reports. We'll start with the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met on June 18th. We had a good meeting. And part of that meeting was to, we agreed to bring to the board a rate change for Ann Schaber, who's going to help us with our audit. So I would like to make a motion to approve that rate increase from last year. It was 190. She has increased her rate to 200.
Right.
As of July 1st. And everything else in her contract remains the same.
I'm sorry, 190 to?
190 to 200. And the remainder of the contract is the same. The responsibilities are the same. There's no retainer. It's kind of, we pay her as we need her.
This is a motion from a committee, so we don't need to have a second. Is there any discussion about the particular motion? All right. In that case, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has passed. All right. Next committee is our Personnel Committee. And I'm looking to Jody.
Yep. So far, we are continuing on with interviews. They're going well. We're hoping to get the position filled by the end of July, early August.
Great. All right. Any questions for Jody from the board? Okay. In that case, we'll move to the third committee, which is the Audit Committee, and that normally would be Kristi. I might look to Jamie, just to kind of give us an update.
I don't mind. We have completed all of the preliminary work for the audit, so we are in good shape with that. That's, it's great timing that Ace is coming on as Business Operations Manager. Ken, Katrin, and Ann Schaber and I had a Zoom meeting a couple weeks ago just to make sure that our task list was in place, everyone knew, you know, who was responsible for what aspects of the audit, so that went well. We've got a meeting with PB Mayor's scheduled for July as we start the process of completing the audit, but we are on schedule and on track.
Very good news. Any questions for Jamie about the audit? All right. Good. All right. We'll move on to our old business. And I think we've kind of covered the first part, which is the new library director search. There's not much more that we can say right now, but we are definitely moving forward with that. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the Memorandum of Understanding with King William County. Dennis sent all of the board members a copy of the final Memorandum of Understanding. Thank goodness, we finally got it signed so that Jamie and the staff could move forward on getting things, getting things closed and doing it in a very organized manner. They have, they have had to do some major work to make that happen, and we do appreciate that. I don't know if you want to say anything about some of what you all have been doing or, you know, with it.
Basically, we worked on the messaging, and at this point, on Monday and Tuesday, we removed most of the equipment that still belonged to PRL from the two locations, except for one circulation computer so that we can continue to receive materials as they come into the book drop. We'll have to work through a process with King William County Library System for some period of time to still get some books back and make sure that they're processed out of our system and go where they need to go. But we are working through that. On the 30th, Sharita and I will be going to the two branches, wrapping things up, handing over keys, and hopefully that will be a smooth process as well.
And King William, I think, is, and Sharon, I don't know if you have any information at all, but that King William is moving forward with, they have signed a contract with LSNS.
That's correct.
And for their libraries. And so I think they're moving forward with working with them.
That's correct. Yeah. They have, they signed a 10-year contract.
Great. Okay. Any questions for Jamie or Sharon on this? All right. In that case, we will move on to our new business, which is the FY 2026 scheduling close, scheduled closings. And Jamie had sent that out to us.
I did. And if not, it's the last page in your packet today. And I think this time last year, we talked about wanting to be a little bit more proactive about holidays and not be waiting until the month before to add on additional days. I will say, Hanover County had announced some additional holidays in May, like mid-May. So they had added as additional holidays November 26th, which is the day before Thanksgiving, December 26th, which is the day after Christmas, and January 2nd, the day after New Year's Day. So when we were thinking about our PRLs, the libraries branch closing schedule, we took that into account. I believe Goochlin is closing early, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and then also have the two days, and then have the three days for December 24th, 25th, and 26th. So it does align somewhat with, with Goochlin's holiday schedule as well. So we took that into account, and of course, we have Labor Day accounting for the three days at the Thanksgiving holiday and the three days at the Christmas holiday. And the only place where we're breaking slightly from Hanover is we've not, we're not proposing Friday, January 2nd is a holiday. is we've not, we're not proposing Friday, January 2nd, as a holiday. We are a public service and we want our libraries to be viewed. So we thought that would be a day that people might enjoy visiting the branches. And so we would remain open for that. I will note, there's one change that will be made in the final version of this as well, to move Wednesday, December 31st up to under the 2025 heading, just for clarity there. So we will make that change. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions for Jamie about the schedule? We may still have, you know, Hanover make announcements or even Goochlin make an announcement sometime, you know, about different holidays. But I think it helps to be as proactive as we can with this so that we're not scrambling at the last minute trying to get the changes in. We appreciate that. Any other questions or comments?
Looks good.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Did you want to make a motion too?
Yes, we do need to do that. Yeah. If I could have a motion to approve this schedule with the changes that she talked about putting in.
So moved.
All right, Barbara has moved that. I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion about it? I think it looks good. All right, in that case, I call for the question. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? So we have adopted the new schedule for next year. Okay, we are all ready to other business. Things are moving very well. I do want you to know, there's a lot of work behind the scenes. You know, even if we only have a half an hour meeting, that does not mean that there's not stuff going on. There's a lot of stuff going on. And under other, other business, does anybody have anything else that they would like to clean up that we have not talked about?
Madam Chair, if I could, I would just like to say that this may be my last meeting, but I have enjoyed working with everyone here. We haven't always agreed, but
That's okay.
We're government. The worst thing government can do is group think. That's something I learned more on the commission than here. We don't hold public hearings. But the key thing that when I was on the commission in public hearings is, don't walk through the door with a red line drawn. Walk through the door, listen to the citizens that give us information for both sides and try to make sure we're making the best decisions for all of the county. Not the majority of the county. Because, or, you know, I know, I know that sounds, I know that sounds awful. But we represent everyone. And a library certainly represents everyone. I compare, I compare the information that we try to deliver to the citizens that we represent. Like a television set. If a movie comes on you don't like, change the channel. We try to, we try to represent everyone and make sure that we've, we've shelved it right and we've moved on. And I think we've, we've knocked heads, but we've, we've tried to do that. And I hope as the, as the new board moves forward, they do that. And we don't have the new members here. And I always tell a new member, remember, everything you put in a text or email is skywriting.
Yes.
So be careful what you write.
You stay professional. I think is the big thing.
It'll, if you, if you write something that, that is making a very strong point, you may want to reread it and reconsider it before you send it out. And again, it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you.
Thank you, Joe.
And particularly the staff. Particularly the staff.
And I have to remind you, Joe, that you may not be on the board, but you're still a citizen. So you can come back and come to the meetings.
I may, I may come occasionally, but I'm going to take a break.
So not to expect you to arrive.
You won't send me, you won't send me for a while. I may come back. I may come back, but you're not going to send me for a while. I'm taking a break. I got, I got a lot of other obligations I could be taking care of.
Well, we are going to, we're going to miss you and Sharon on the board. We really are. And we do know one of the new members. We have Rudy Burgess from Hanover has been selected by the Board Supervisors. We, there will be another person from Hanover County who will be appointed, but we don't know who that is yet. Okay? All right. If there is no other business, like I said, it's a very short meeting. But you can enjoy the rest of the, of the month and have a nice Fourth of July. So at this point, I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I do have one more thing.
Yes.
As you recall, I did request a group picture. I have a group picture.
Yes, Joe did ask for it.
All the boards and commissions I've ever served on, I even wore a tie today.
Why, I noticed that.
And I had considered wearing a suit until it was going to be 100 degrees.
Yes. Good, good decision. Yes, after this, and then we want to look at lunch menus for everyone. So, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
We'll let Jody, the motion, and Sharon do the second.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Okay, any discussion about adjourning? In that case, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?